Okay, it is six o'clock. February first, 2023. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Chair Solomon is absent tonight. Vice Chair Sarver?
Here.
Commissioner Dahl?
Here.
Commissioner Strauss Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Benyon?
Here.
Commissioner Hubler?
Here.
City staff, Jason Sullivan, Planning and Building Supervisor?
Here.
Debbie McDonald, Planning Commission Clerk, here.
And take the call for the meeting. The next meeting is on the February 21st. Is that the joint meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Everybody can attend that?
I cannot.
Okay.
It's a girl scout night for me.
I think we have a quorum. We have four.
I'm guessing Grant will be here, too.
Yeah.
He didn't say he wasn't going to.
Okay, so after multiple requests, we're going to, Chair will accept the motion to excuse Grant Sullivan from the meeting tonight.
I'll make a motion to excuse Grant.
Second.
Motion is moved and seconded. Chair will call the roll. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed or going to abstain? No, okay. Motion passes. Grant's excused. Approval of minutes. Anybody have any corrections? Redactions, misspellings?
I had one correction that I caught. So on the, for the good of the order, staff comments, Jason stated that the commission will have every meeting this year and include a few extra meetings. I think what that should be is every monthly meeting. I thought what he was saying was once a month, not twice a month like we could have.
Okay. I'll fix that.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Arrived.
I thought you, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we're going. I'll second it then.
Okay. Both are seconded. Without any further ado, those in favor of taking the minutes as with correction noted, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Passes. Public comments, concerns?
None.
Okay. We're going to public meetings now, Jason, or we want to hold on those?
Oh, I think your next one would be the public hearing. And I do apologize, I was going to write a script, but my week got away from me. I apologize. I've been in a shoreline hearings board hearing all week. You would, yeah, it would be the public hearing. You simply call the public, you open the public hearing, ask for the staff presentation. At the end of the staff presentation, you would ask for any public comments. If there are none, then there would be a motion from the Planning Commission to make a recommendation. And I can help walk you through that, Vice Chair, as needed.
Okay. Well, at that point, then I'll open the public meeting. Let's see. Women, introduce yourselves and make your presentation.
Sure. I'm Jack Nehauser, the Superintendent of Public Works Utilities with the city of Bonny Lake. And I'm here with Andrew Fonda, our Assistant City Engineer and Staff of Parametrics, who is our consultant that are helping us out with this effort. This, January 4th, we actually came here and brought forward a stormwater code changes for Chapter 15 of our stormwater code. And I'm going to give some background information, and then we'll lead into parametrics to give you more of the details. Background, Bonny Lake is regulated by a federal NPDS permit. That is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and that regulates the stormwater discharges in the state of Washington. This year in '23, we had a new component placed upon us that we have to develop a source control program. And this entails updates to that code. And parametrics, please, if you would, give some technical details of that.
Okay, and I'm looking to see Paul. Looks like maybe he's having some technical difficulties.
I'm here, but I'm not sure why the camera's not working.
All right. Well, at least we have your voice. I'm going to share some slides, anyway. So I guess first we'll introduce ourselves. I'm Erin Ferguson. I'm an environmental planner with Parametrics, and I helped draft the code language. And there we go. We got Paul. See if I talk long enough.
And I'll introduce myself. I'm Paul Fent with Parametrics. I'm a storm surface water practice lead, and have been engaged in the permitting, the NPDS permitting that the city is responsible to meet. So Erin, yeah, you're putting up the presentation.
Hopefully that showed up. Everyone see it?
So far we have a blue screen.
Let's try stopping and starting again. You won't share my screen today. Worked five months on. All right, any luck?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Second tries. What does it? All right, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, so, oops, I just lost it myself. There we go. So your NPDS permit, which is the permit from ecology that manages stormwater, in the permit that's active right now, which was issued in 2019 and will continue until 2024, the permit now requires the city to do a source control program. And the source control program's goal is to protect water quality, increase public awareness around things that are related, that are actions and activities that occur, that come in contact with stormwater, that could introduce pollutants to stormwater, and to specifically educate the businesses on stormwater control actions that can be taken. The overall program, as it's implemented and as inspections are done, it provides businesses with approaches to manage sources of stormwater. We do a site, you will do a site inspection. You'll identify potential activities that could introduce pollutants. You'll offer ideas and approaches on how to manage those in a responsible way. And in doing so, you're going to improve the overall water quality. And then there's usually other tangential benefits like improved worker safety and resource conservation. In order to implement this thing, you'll need to do code amendments for the program, which means adding a code that says you will and can do these inspections, and then offering what kinds of things need to be done, and what sort of, who's included in it, what kind of activities need to be done, and then a set of compliance and enforcement actions. You're required to start your inspections this year, and you need to have the code in place in order to do that.
Great. And this next slide is just a summary of the specific code updates. This is an amendment to existing stormwater management code. It's not a new part of the code. It just changes what's already there, makes a few additions to comply with the requirements of the new Phase Two permit. Within that amendment, there's a new definition that's added for the source control inventory, which helps identify the types of businesses and sites that will be included on that. And then it also requires the creation of that inventory. It also requires best management practices for polluting, pollution generating sources. And those best management practices are set out in the Pierce County Stormwater Management and Site Development Manual. So again, those are existing BMPs that are just adopted now and required by the code amendment. Following up on what Paul said about inspections, the code also requires those inspections, and then provides strategies to encourage people to comply. It does also authorize enforcement violations, and refers to existing Chapter 14 of the Bonny Lake Code to create sort of consistent enforcement among not only stormwater management issues, but among other code violations also. And then just a few other minor updates and corrections. While we were at it, we thought we'd fixed those. Back to Paul.
So this is what the code and then the requirements that are in the permit will do, is the first step in this is to create the inventory of the sites to inspect. And the inventory of businesses are based on what are codes. Every business has a business type activity code, and there are lists of codes that are included in the permit, in the permit guidance that say that these are businesses that should be considered and added to the inventory. And then there are some businesses that are, may or may not have codes, and so those become, they go into a group that are part of the choice of the building director and so on to include them or exclude them and so on. And then there are clearly other activities that don't have codes, or they have codes that shouldn't be included. So out of this, you create a code of sites to inspect. The next part of this in the public outreach is, first of all, you'll typically have a program or have some information on your website that says that this source control program exists and is going to happen. And then you'll start initiating contact with the business owners that need to be inspected in the first year. And then you'll prepare materials, preparing materials to provide either on the website and to provide to the inspectors that can be given to the business owners in order to demonstrate some of the typical source control best management practices that they can apply. So part of the inspection, it's really an inspection and a compliance sort of operation where you really want to go out there and just point out and help educate the business owners about what things there are that they can do, and recommend things that they do on their sites to manage the pollutants that could be getting into stormwater. Once you finish that stuff, you'll perform the inspections, and you're required by the permit to inspect a number that's equal to 20% of the sites each year. And the reason I didn't just say 20% of the sites is that, for example, if you have 100 sites, you're required to do 20 inspections. And some of the inspections could be a reinspection of one of the other sites, sites that you've already been to, to follow up on some compliance. So you have, you just have to take the number of inspections that you do in a year is equal to 20% of the total number of sites that are on your inventory. And then the last step, of course, is going out and meeting with the, contacting and then meeting with the business owner, and doing a site inspection, and then having a conversation with them about what kinds of actions can be taken, pointing out certain activities that could be problematic, and providing the materials that I talked about a minute ago.
That's all we had to present.
Great. Thank you, Erin and Paul. I appreciate that. They've been doing a really commendable job of helping us out with this in the city. With that, we are seeking for the Planning Commission to recommend that the council adopt the proposed amendments to the stormwater regulations. Is there any questions?
Council have any questions?
There is a couple in the way that you guys are wording it to taking out like the, is it the manager or director that is being changed to GEST director? Why is it being changed to GEST director rather than Public Works Director?
I think it's already defined in the municipal code, what that means. And so just to, for consistency, just to leave it as director.
Okay. I just had one question. So we do the 20% of inspections, so like 20% of the number, and double inspections can count in that number. Do you have like a system to get all of them inspected over a certain time period? Like if you had to do 20, inspect 20%, like maybe 10, five, six years, you have everybody inspected? Are they going to be like notified ahead of time, like you're year three? Or is it just going to be like to your basis, like who you feel like needs to be inspected?
Well, I mean, we're still, we're still in the process of, you know, creating the actual inspection program and what that looks like. I mean, right now, we're focused on what's required in the NPDS permit. But, you know, as far as, you know, year two and year three, we're still deciding on what that would look like.
Okay. I figured that was kind of like a long view question, and you might not have it figured out, but.
Well, maybe I could add to that, too, though. What we've actually started already is indicating every one of the source control items or areas that we need to look at. We actually have a list encompassing everything. And then, yes, eventually you want to figure out which ones are more important to hit first, and that'll determine the 20%. A lot of our focus is going to be not only the ones that are best thing for the buck, but then also the education piece of how we're going to get this information out there, and how to really encourage people to follow the stormwater regulations and get that. So yes, that will be a necessary element. You're correct in that. And that'll just be a next step for us.
Thanks. Yeah, I figured you didn't have it all figured out, but awesome. Thank you.
That leads me, I think she's asking questions. That made me think. A couple of the spots that I was reading in there is it gives the director control over, it sounds like giving the director control over making adjustments to the codes and stuff as they see fit. Is that what I'm reading?
Maybe parametrics, you could help with that one?
Yeah, and of course, I don't have the language memorized, but my recollection is that we do give some discretion to the director. That's consistent with some other parts of your code, where maybe a certain source control violation isn't solved directly by a BMP that's already identified, just giving some flexibility to sort of work with owners in defining those BMPs. Paul, you might have better examples than I do.
Well, I think what's intended is, is that there's some discretion in what the nature is of the, there's always a range of solutions and responses within any of these inspections, and certainly in stormwater. Stormwater is a, barely, it's a risk management field, so there's not really an absolute answer or question to each one of them. And so there's a little bit of latitude there. I think the other latitude that is offered by the permit, and that can be, is, I believe, built into the code, is to, the, has to do with the inventory. So while the permit requires certain businesses to be included, there are businesses that don't have codes, or don't have, or the codes aren't clear, or they might have, they just fit into those gray areas around those numbers and so on. So there is discretion to include something in an inventory because it's not clear in the permit. The director doesn't have latitude in taking something out that is clearly put in by the, in the codes that are in the permit. So you can add things to it, but you can't subtract things from the code. But then the other part is, is that sometimes these codes, the businesses that are included in the codes may actually, upon inspection, you find that it's all their work is done indoors, there's no contact with stormwater. So in the process, you have the opportunity to say, we've inspected the site, there's no contact with stormwater, we'll put it into this category, meaning we may not have to look at it or inspect it again. And that's at your discretion to do that, but you can't take it off the inventory. It's still in the inventory.
Okay. So I guess to kind of follow up on that, just as a business owner, having someone, a director, that has leniency to be able to add things as they see fit, doesn't sit as well with me because I've experienced that as a business owner, and they come up with their own little things that they want to add in, and it may not fit within what is in writing. And then, but they say, well, I said that's how it's going to be, so that's how it's going to be. So is this going to be something that the director is going to be able to just say, hey, you know, I want to change this, and I want to add that in? But there's no code that tells them that they have to follow codes?
I'll jump in really quick on this one, and Paul, you can jump back in, too. The discretion is still limited by the definitions in the code. And so the definition of the source control inventory, including the businesses that are subject to inspection, have to be businesses and sites where there's a presence of pollutant generating activity, and that that has been identified. And so that's the criteria that the director would be bound by. So even if the use doesn't fall within one of the codes, it would have to, there would have to be pollutant generating activity that has been identified.
Yeah, the other item to consider is that there are lists of source control best management practices in the Pierce County manual, and that becomes the guidance that can be used. And so the latitude, any latitude that might be in that guidance manual is afforded to this, but that generally becomes a list of best management practices that could be applied for source controls.
Okay, so they'll be limited within what their range of reach is within that code? Okay.
So in other words, it would have to be, so to speak, under the jurisdiction of the code in order for the manager or director to add anything into that? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I have a question. Would there be any kind of like an appeal process if a business owner did not agree with the director's discretionary things that they wanted to do? Is there any kind of an appeal process or anything that they could do? Could the owner do something like that?
We would definitely be working with the, our first goal would actually be educating the owner and working with them. I don't know if there's anything in the code that was written on the appeal process of that, but that is our intention, is that we'll be working with them and educating them, and then trying to encourage that of the stormwater practices.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, is that we did not specifically add an appeal provision, but we did refer to, it's Chapter 14, 130, is the existing code enforcement provisions for the city, and those do include all of the provisions. One, that the city has to follow in pursuing a violation, and then also sort of the other side, sort of the roles or options for people who are subject to it. So those existing procedures would apply here, too.
I think we touched on this last time. Was it public works people doing the inspections or code enforcement?
Public works people will be administering the program. But then when it gets to code enforcement, then the code enforcement staff would be taking over at that time.
It'd be the ones doing the actual field work?
Public works would.
Public works.
Yep.
But if there's a violation, then it would be code.
Yeah, yeah, I assumed that. All right. Is that satisfied? Commissioner?
Yep.
Questions, comments? Anything else? Got it? Do I need to close this before I ask for a motion?
Jason has some.
Oh, go ahead, Jason.
Oh, I was just going to answer your question. You would need to close the public hearing now before you ask for any motions.
Yeah, okay. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Chair will entertain motion to accept the proposed amendments to the stormwater regulations.
I've got it right here.
I gotta have a motion in a second.
Okay. I move that the Planning Commission recommend the city council adopt the proposed amendments to the stormwater regulation.
I'll second.
And we have read of the motion and a second. Chair will call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? Nay. Amendment passes.
Great. Thank you, Commission. Thank you, paramedics.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And there was a second public hearing tonight, right, Jake?
No. No, that was the only public hearing for tonight.
Just the one? Okay. I thought we had two. All right. In that case, can we move on to older, continuous business?
Yep. And this is the part I hate when I'm the only head on the screen. It's like I'm the Wizard of Oz. Don't pay attention to the guy on the screen.
We could hang curtains in front of you.
Well, and what's bad is the way the camera's pointed. I actually get to see myself on the big screen the whole time.
Like you're always looking in the mirror.
Oh, it's horrible.
So, okay, so do you have old or any, old continuing or new business?
Well, we have the two policies. I think we briefed the Planning Commission on both of these policies before, and we've included them in your packet. However, we don't have records that the planning commissioners have signed them. I believe, Debbie, you have brought signature pages for each policy, that each commissioner needs to sign so that we can send it over to the city clerk.
You can leave it on the floor and just sign it underneath if you want to. I can do that.
The first one is the anti-harassment policy, which basically is that the city will not tolerate any physical or sexual harassment, or verbal harassment of any kind, and that, you know, there's a process by which if you feel that you have been subject to harassment, that, you know, you'd need to contact me, Human Resources, the mayor, or the city administrator. There's an investigation period, and it kind of defines what constitutes, you know, the different types of harassment, and that includes the report and complaint process. I can ask any questions. All complaints are confidential. I can ask, and there's a report form in the policy, and in the last page of the policy is basically acknowledging that you've received the policy. So I can, if there's any questions, I can try to answer them. I'm not an expert, but I can do my best to answer questions as it relates to the policy. All right, seeing none, I will.
Just flip to the next page.
Seeing none, I'll move over to the technology resource policy. I think this one was pretty much, we had a big one email discussion about this one last year, so I think we're pretty good on this one. Basically, it is you need to use your city for planning commissioners because you're not issued laptops or computers. The main one is making sure that you use your city emails for all communications with city staff regarding planning commission businesses. This is really important because once you start using your personal email address, you can open up your personal computer to public disclosure requests. So you always want to make sure that you're using your city email address, because it is then maintained and documented. So if there's a public disclosure request, we can provide that information without having to kind of do searches on private computers or on private emails. I think that's the biggest one that applies to the Planning Commission, because you don't really have access to any of the other technology that the city uses. Once again, there is a, you know, acknowledgement that you've read the policy, and I can answer any questions. So I'll let this kind of work around real quick, and then we'll talk about the joint meeting.
Okay, we're good, Jason.
All right. So I'll just wait till Carrie can get back to her seats. That way she asks questions, I can answer them.
That's why you guys put me at the end today.
Your steps in.
So we do have the joint meeting coming up on the 21st of February. It is required by the municipal, the Planning Commission and city councils sit in joint meeting at least once a year. We always do it about this time. The two big topics that will be on that meeting are the work plan for '23-'24. I will let you know that it'll probably be mainly the comprehensive plan. There might be some other things in there, like the development code update. We still have the CEPAC code to finish. We still have another project that came out of HAP implementation grant that needs to get finished. But by and large, the majority of that is going to be the comprehensive plan update and the and the parks plan update. Which leads me to my second topic for the joint meeting. There will be a presentation by our consultants from the, for the park plan, kind of providing the site assessments that they completed for our current parks. Basically, what are the conditions of our current parks? What are the issues? Not really kind of what's, you know, not what are we going to fix them or how we're going to fix them, but just like, this is, is what exists in the city, and these are the issues that exist in the city that will set the baseline for what we talk about as we update that parks plan. So those are the two big, the two big items. I didn't think there was anything else, but wanted to bring this up in case the planning commission thought there was another topic or item that should be included.
What time does that start, Jason?
It will be at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay.
And it is, and, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, the city council knows we're coming because last year it seemed like they were surprised that we were there.
I, I would hope so because it's going to be on the agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And everybody reads their agendas, right?
I know, it was like last year, they were like, why, what are you guys doing? I was like, we're, we're supposed to be here.
Okay, is that good? I guess for the good of the order.
I do have a question, Jason. Just kind of find out, circling back on old business. The, the code in, that we had discussed and talked about some changes being made in the Costco development area because of all the storage units coming in. Did that ever get sent to city council and, and anything done with that?
Yes, they adopted it. So it got modified a little bit, but not, I don't think in a completely horrible way. What the planning, what the city council had me add was kind of a change to our non-conforming uses code that said basically if you were on this map that we created, that your self-storage facility could continue to operate, and if you chose to rebuild it, you could. So for example, we have some older ones out there that, under normal code, if they were to tear them, tear it down, they wouldn't have been able to rebuild it. And so the city council kind of wanted to say, if you've been a self-storage facility for 30 years and you choose to demolish the old one and modernize with a new building, you can. So basically, it set a cap on the number of ones that could be built. So there, the ones that you see out there now, plus three that are in different phases of permitting, two of them are in East Town, and then one that's right by the, the Costco.
Thank you.
Okay, correspondence?
None.
None. Staff comments?
So like I said, we'll have our meeting on February 21st. This is a joint meeting. After that, we will have our meeting on March 1st. I may be remote for that meeting, but we will have some items. One thing I know that we forgot to put on this agenda was the bylaws. We read the bylaws, and based on some things that have changed, we needed to make some tweaks. We were supposed to put it on this one, but we, for some reason, just didn't get added. We will have that added to the March 1st one. For people interested, the park commission, or not the park commission, the steering committee for the parks plan, we've got, I think, all the members almost identified. So we're hoping to have the final roster set by February 10th and have the meeting kind of at the end of the year. I'm hopeful that our representative from the, or in the month, sorry, end of the month, end of February. And then, and then have our, our representative from the planning commission kind of brief back to the planning commission as that committee meets to provide input. And then we've also got all the contracts going forward to the city council for the cop plan update. So look forward to those items starting to come, roll through the planning commission over the coming months.
We had the applications for our vacancy?
We've had a number of applications. So we both, existing commissioners applied to be reappointed, and then I believe we received three or four other applications. So we are now in the process of reviewing all of those applications. And I will be, I'll be beginning with the mayor and the city administrator to make kind of decisions and recommendations to the mayor.
Good.
Commissioner comments? Concerns, whines?
No, is the, is the, the commission seats that are coming up or, and the current one that is open, do those go, is the way I remember we had talked about it, that goes to the city council after the, after the mayor?
Correct. The, the way the code was changed when we eliminated the Parks and Design Commission was that no chair is kind of safe. All chairs kind of have to get reevaluated when their term is up. The mayor rate makes a recommend, mayor makes a recommendation which has to be then confirmed by the city council.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Anything else? In that case, I will accept motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's most, so moved.
Bye, Jason.
Bye, Jason.